With meeting of the Shreveport City Council now been called to order, we will have our invocation by Councilman James Fleury and we will have the pledge led by Councilman Willie Bradford. Stand please.
Let us pray. O gracious, kind and loving Father, thank you for this day, God. Thank you for the opportunity to join together here and share opportunity to opinions and, Lord, just let us do those things that help the city. I pray for those who are less fortunate. I pray for the men and women of the Shreveport Police Department and Fire Department and all the other departments that go about carrying out the duties to service and take care of the citizens. I pray for the mayor and the leadership and I pray for this council. Go with us now, forgive us of our sins and we ask for your blessings in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Let us repeat the pleas in unison.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Florin.
Here.
Councilman Green.
Here.
And Councilman Alden. Here. They're motion.
So move.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Butcher to approve the minutes of administrative conference from October 7th and council meeting on October 8th. That motion carries six. One absent. Does any council member have any awards or recognition at this time?
I do.
Councilman Green?
I have the Honorable Mr. Al Moore here from Christian Service. He'd like to come and while he's coming, I'd like to invite all of you to Union Mission Baptist Church this evening at 6 o'clock. Dr. Reverend William Barber II will be preaching there. Mr. Moore?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. On November 3rd, we'll be having our annual Poor Man Supper, which will be held at 2346 Levy and I want to invite all of the council down to come and support. It's a symbolic meal where you have bread, water and soup. So it tell you how to, if you feel to go to bed hungry. So that'll be Sunday, November 3rd from 5 to 7, Christian service program 2346 Levy. Thank you again, Councilman Green.
Awesome, Mr. Chairman. I have Mr. Larry Anderson here. I'd like for him to come up and have a word. He's gonna be on the Sports Authority, but he's here today and plus he's a number two Steelers fan.
Good evening to the mayor and to distinguished council. I'm appreciative of being here this afternoon, this evening. I'm looking forward to the opportunity of working with the Sports Commission and provided I'm approved. And so, thank you all so much for having me today. Appreciate you.
Mr. Anderson, you wanna tell them why you're the number two Steelers fan?
Cause I'm number one.
I think he got a high playing.
I know Councilman Green for awhile and you know, if I don't bring him some memorabilia, from time to time, he gonna get on me. But I played with the Steelers for four years and in the NFL for seven. And so, I'm just happy to have opportunity to hopefully serve.
Thank you, thank. Councilman, how many years you played for the Steelers?
Well, Mr. Mayor, all my high school days, San Lao football, I was always a fan. I was a quarterback.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Nicholson?
I'd like to invite representatives of Project Celebration to come forward at this time, please. Ladies, thank you so much for being here. If you first introduce yourselves, I'd like everybody to have an opportunity to say who they are.
Yes, sir. My name's Robin Anseem Smith and I'm with Project Celebration and I am a women's advocate as well as the children's advocate.
Hello, I'm Nikita Turner. I'm also a women's advocate with Project Celebration.
I'm Deidre Williams. I'm a community education and outreach domestic violence advocate.
Jerry Ryder, domestic violence shelter manager.
Good afternoon, I'm Chanel Willis. I am Project Celebration outreach advocate.
My name is Deidre Williams and I'm a volunteer for Project Celebration.
My name is Al Travice Jenkins and I'm an intern for Project Celebration.
Thank you all so much for being here. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as you all well know. I had the privilege of attending a breakfast for Project Celebration last week and just was incredibly moved to hear the stories of the people who do work on behalf of victims of domestic violence and some of the victims themselves. Just an incredibly touching set of remarks by a local sheriff and his mother. The work you do is so important. Domestic violence impacts all kinds of people from all kinds of families and it's so critically important that women and children and others who are victims of domestic violence have somewhere to turn for help. I'm familiar with your work through my affiliation with the Shreveport Bar Foundation in past years. My colleague at my law practice, Heidi Kemble Martin, did domestic violence work representing victims of domestic violence for years and so I've heard many of her stories. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for everything that you do.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules concerning the resolution honoring Project Celebration.
May I have Perkins on the board real quick?
Yeah, Councilman, you mind if I jump in?
Please do me.
I was actually gonna recognize y'all today as well. While I'm doing this, can I ask Assistant City Attorney and Lead Prosecutor Monique Davis to step to the podium as well? Is she here?
Mayor, she just got out of court, so she's not gonna be able to make it.
Alright, well, I wanted to recognize Prosecutor Davis because she will be awarded the 2019 Pioneer of Social Change Award for her tireless efforts in the fight against domestic violence, but I also wanted to extend an opportunity for you all to kinda tell us about some of the events that you have coming up as well.
Actually, that's amazing because I brought, and I'm just gonna leave y'all a couple. As you know, domestic violence does not just affect women and children, but it affects men as well. Whether or not that is because they are an actual victim of domestic violence, it does affect the men. So tomorrow at 11:30 to 1, we are inviting all men, I'm sorry ladies, it is a call to men. This is an international organization and we have decided to bring it to Shreveport. So it's not something that will just go on in October, but we are launching this tomorrow. It'll be held at the Office Hub at 331 Milam. We would like for all of y'all to attend. It's free, it's lunch and it is good home cooking. I mean, I'm not going to tell you where it's gonna be catered, but it's really good. So walk on down to 331 Milam. We will have two speakers, both men, that you'll probably recognize and they're going to speak about healthy relationships and how we can bring this more awareness to the community. After this, by the end of the year, we're going to bring men and women and have like a forum luncheon and I think that'll be quite interesting because as I've said, it affects men, women and children. So please come. We have some other smaller events happening all through the month, but I just would recognize that October is Domestic Violence Month, but as we know from, as advocates, it's 24 hours, seven days a week. And I just want to reiterate that we do have two shelters in northwest Louisiana and we're open 24 hours a day and it's not an answering service. People will receive the help that they need. Thank you for recognizing us today and the only other thing is we're asking this year for everyone to take a pledge to bring awareness to domestic violence and if you would like to have a pledge card, they'll be left here as well. Thank you so much.
Ms. Smith, thank you. Thank you so much for your contribution. Thank you so much for what you all do for our community. I really quickly want to say this, I don't think that we put enough emphasis on it in the community. You have an ally in me. When I took this office, the first three homicides of the five in our city were all due to domestic violence. It's something that we do not pay attention to enough. I am forever grateful that you all are putting your energy, your effort, your free time into this and you have an ally in me. I would love to support you in whatever way I can, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Alright, Councilman Green?
Ms. Smith and to all of you, thank you. I'd also like, if you give me a contact number, I'd like to interview whoever on your staff on my radio show, if you'd give me a contact number.
That's our, actually our shelter number, it's 318-226-5015.
226.
5015.
5015.
And that is the shelter number. I can't reiterate that number enough. I know that people call the 800 number, but as a mother, I would never want my daughter to have to call an 800 number, to call another number, to call another number. The police have our number and that's great and they are fantastic. I have chill bumps because I really want people to know our number. They don't have to call any number but that, and I'm probably getting, get in trouble. I've been advertising this number all over the place, but 318-226-5015 and someone will answer the phone. Thank you.
Councilman Butcher?
Ms. Smith, thank you very much for what y'all do. My wife's been involved with y'all for quite some time and I understand maybe more so than anybody sitting up here what some of y'all do, so I really, really appreciate y'all and it's a great organization. And Councilman Nicholson beat me to the punch on this, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my motion again is to suspend the rules concerning the resolution.
Councilman McLevy, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ladies, will you stay in place while we adopt our resolution? I'm sorry.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman. The motion to suspend, to take up Resolution 129. Motion by Councilman Nicholson and second by Councilman Bradford to suspend the rule. And that motion carries with...
And I move to adopt the motion.
Six.
Second.
And one absent. Motion by Councilman Nicholson and second by Councilman Green to adopt. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, I never miss an opportunity for a picture, so Mr. Mayor, if you'll step down.
Councilman, why are you going down? Can you read the resolution?
Oh, yes, please.
It's a resolution recognizing Project Celebration for its work to prevent and to assist the victims of domestic violence, to support Domestic Violence Awareness Month and to otherwise provide with respect thereto by Councilman John Nicholson. Whereas Project Celebration, Inc. is an organization committed to helping individuals and families enhance their ability to live successfully in the community. One program offered by Project Celebration is the Domestic Violence Program with shelters. And whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender and income levels. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over 4 million Americans each year. And whereas women in Louisiana are killed by men at a rate of 2.42 per 100,000 females, which ranks Louisiana second nationally. And whereas children of maternal victims of domestic violence are 50% more likely to be victims of domestic violence and experience lifelong repercussions from the trauma of domestic violence exposure. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism and non-productivity. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas Project Celebration is a part of its efforts to prevent domestic violence, is an advocate for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, observed in October each year, which provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for organizations that provide services and assistance to victims. And whereas Project Celebration is an organization that provides services and assistance to victims of domestic violence, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convened, then it recognizes Project Celebration, Inc. for its work to prevent domestic violence and for its services and assistance in preventing that it provides to victims of domestic violence. Be further recognized that the Shreveport City Council recognizes and supports the Governor's Proclamation proclaiming October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourages all citizens to increase their awareness of domestic violence in ways to prevent it and to be advocates for services and assistance to victims. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Hello, the council member, Mayor Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to invite the council out this Friday at 9:00 a.m. for the grand opening of the Common Park. If y'all have driven west of downtown, y'all probably seen all the construction over by the Strack Building, but it'll be ready for a grand opening this Friday if you have an opportunity to attend. Also want to invite you all to mark your calendars for the Joint Mayor's Prayer Breakfast that'll be held at 7:00 a.m. on November 7th at the Bossier City Civic Center. And our next community bond meeting will be at 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 29th at Bill Cockrell Recreational Center with the West Shreveport Alliance Group. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Mr. Green? Property standards, anyone have anything for property standards today? There ain't none. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Green?
I'd like to suspend the rule to bring up case 165 zoning case 19387 dash...
Second. I move, I'm your second, Mr. Chairman. It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman, by the chair to suspend the rule for 165. Please vote. Motion carries with six. One absent. Chairman? I'm sorry. Can I ask Mr. Clark to come up for a minute, please? Mr. Chairman, we spoke on this a little yesterday and I think the council is very aware of this application regarding this housing development along the Pine Road, Jefferson Page Road corridor. We understand that there were several meetings, Mr. Clark. And the, you did your research and staff made a suggestion. Can you give us a review of what led to your decision? Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir. Basically, we looked at the development along Jefferson Page to the west of Pine Road after the application had been submitted for a rezoning of the property from RE residential estate to R2 multifamily. Initially, we thought that it might be a situation where it could fit into that particular vacant property. We continue, as always, we continue to do additional research and continue to look at the feasibility of a use fitting into a particular piece of property. And we concluded that, after much deliberation, we concluded that based on the fact that to the south was a single-family residential development and to the north was single-family residential development, that the best use for that property initially would be the continuation of single-family residential development. And at that point, we recommended to the MPC Board, the denial of the application and MPC Board denied the, recommended denial of the application for rezoning.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I know it's your district, but if there's, if it's okay with you, I'd like to move that we move to uphold the MPC's...
Mr. Chairman?
No, that's what we're gonna...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is an ordinance that's on for introduction.
Oh, is it?
And it's, it requires two readings and the UDC requires the council to take it up. So it's just on for introduction today.
Okay. Alright.
Mr. Chair, well, I'd like to withdraw my motion, but I'd also like for the citizens to know that in two weeks, this will, we will uphold the decision of the MPC and this will not be happening. But you all are welcome to, we're gonna have a very entertaining meeting today, y'all welcome to stay.
They don't want to be entertained.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Green? No, that's what, yeah, go ahead.
I would, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also make a motion that we would bring up case number 10301 WFC MPC at this time and do the discussion. I have to leave early and I want to be a part of the...
What ordinance is that now? Which one is it?
That's the, uh...
Cell phone?
Cell phone, cell tower.
Okay.
Yes.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Vice Chair to take up the ordinance on the cell tower. Please vote.
Yeah. And so they can come and speak at this time.
Are you... Motion carries with six. One absent.
We can bring it up.
We just bring it up and now we allow them to speak. Yes, sir. So each party at this time will have their, a lot of time to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. We are, which one is it?
The cell tower.
Section 11, appeals.
Appeals.
C.
It's MPC case number 19-301-WFC.
Mr. Thompson, I'm having a hard time hearing because they call a lot of...
It's MPC case number 19-301-WFC.
Let's hear from the applicant first, please, on this. Well, Leah Pellon.
Yeah, Leah Pellon.
Quick question, Mr. Chair. Two points, will it be a three-minute presentation time and will it be limited to just one speaker?
Mr. Francis, we will limit you to three minutes. You're welcome to have two speakers if you'd like.
Great, thank you very much. Good afternoon, my name is Bev Francis, 112 East Pecan in San Antonio. We provided you with a very simple chronology which details the two MPC staff reviews in which they made the recommendation that the Hemp Hill application be denied. The second staff report said specifically that Hemp Hill had not provided adequate information to meet the standard of its burden of proof for the need of the tower. Additionally, in our chronology that we provided you are the two notifications of incompleteness that were submitted by your consultant CMS after they reviewed the application materials and after they reviewed the supplemental materials of Hemp Hill. Additionally, we note that October 16th report that you just received last week in which the CMS team came to the conclusion that the appeal should be approved and the decision of the MPC Board overturned. As you know, your MPC staff is very diligent. They're very hardworking, they're very conscientious, as you can tell by the multiple materials that they presented in their package, the depth of their research, the length that they went in order to have Hemp Hill provide the information required by your code not to create a new standard for review. CMS is a nationally known and recognized consulting firm. They have represented 1,000-plus municipalities over 20 years doing exactly what you charged them to do, and that is to review materials, review applications and come to a conclusion and recommendation to municipalities such as you. They spent nine pages quoting the testimony of representatives of Hemp Hill and provided follow-up points calling into question the truthfulness and the veracity of the statements and correctness of those statements. As we discussed when we met on September 24th, we discussed the burden of proof. The burden of proof is on Hemp Hill to show that there is a need for this tower. When it was presented to the MPC Board based upon the presentation and the comments that were called out by CMS, the Board applied a incorrect standard. Instead of applying the standard of Hemp Hill has the burden of proof, they created a new standard. They said that no one has proved that there is no need for the tower. That is what the new, that is the new standard outside of the code that they based their decision on. As CMS has noted in their report in their recommendation for approval of the appeal, to go to a new standard outside the code would then open the door for additional applicants to come in, use that as justification for towers outside the code. Thank you again for the time that you've given to us and we respectfully request the appeal be approved and overturn the decision.
Mr. Meester?
Good afternoon, my name is Alvin Meester, 909 Poitras, New Orleans, Louisiana, 70112. We understand that the council may be entertaining a motion to postpone this matter. Not sure if that's the case or not, but if the council is contemplating a motion to postpone, we would respectfully ask that the council not postpone this matter and rule on the appeal at this meeting. At this point, we've been working on this since May. There's a lot of information. Don't really feel that anything new would come out of postponing it and we just respectfully recommend that you, if you are contemplating postponing it, not postpone this matter. Another matter that we wanted to bring up and remind the Board, the council, is that on appeal, this is not a new trial or hearing on the application and as such, no new evidence can be permitted. That the council may look at the record, the council may look at and listen to arguments of counsel, different analysis and things of that nature, but no new evidence, no factual evidence. And this is consistent with the interpretation of the Rule of Procedure 13.2D by the city attorney. Finally, we realize that this is a very complicated issue. Going back and forth, nine pages of CMS final reports, back and forth, you've seen all of the letters, the analysis, and we would ask that if you do have doubt that the MPC did not have sufficient information and we feel that there's definitely some doubt, that the proper thing to do is to deny and allow Hemp Hill to reapply, to approve the appeal and similar to what was discussed at the last meeting, it would almost be the equivalent of a remand where the city council would approve the appeal and then Hemp Hill would be free to reapply and address in a proper forum these issues and if they feel and if they are able to present new information, that would be the proper venue for that. So for those reasons, we ask that you approve the appeal to deny the special use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Butcher?
Mr. Clark and Mr. Bailey, I just want to ask one more time, because I think that Councilman Nicholson's concern is a concern of mine as well. I don't want all the Southeast report to be littered with, I don't want to call it littered, but I don't want cellphone towers and towers all over where you can't see anything other than that. However, I have heard from some constituents in that area and my own personal experience in that area, and there is a lack of coverage. I wouldn't say complete lack of coverage, but it's not quite up to the standard in other areas of town. I guess that moving forward, you will be consulting with these consultants in a different way than we did on this one. Is that what I'm understanding?
And I'll let Adam elaborate, but moving forward, we will have the ability to engage a consultant to review the applications as they come in, because we don't have the technical capacity to answer the questions that sometimes come before us, but the consultants with the expertise and the knowledge that they have will be able to make those type determinations and make those recommendations to us.
You know, my concern is what's best in the eyes of the constituents of my district, and this is in my district. And I feel like that, you know, the argument that the tower is in a bad location, well, you can't justify that, because the other tower is, I think, probably in a less... It's in a more populated area, so it's not as good a spot as where this new tower's going to go. So, I just, I hate that we've gotten to this point, and I think that we put a lot of emphasis on what one NPC member said, and, you know, I respect your staff immensely. You and I have had numerous conversations, but now that we have this new UDC in place, I just think that Councilman Nicholson's fear of cellphone towers going on every corner may be a moot point. So, thank you.
One other question, Mr. Chairman. And I guess I'm trying to understand clearer the future of this technology and our capacity to grow, to expand our ability to reach the world. Do you see, do you see in the future more towers? And I'm not saying saturated, but more towers would be advantageous for the city?
He might, I don't think I have the capacity to. I think that, you know, you need as much coverage area as you possibly can get, and I think that there are different ways in which you can accomplish that goal, and possibly cluttering the city with multiplicity of towers may not be the best solution to accomplishing that goal.
There was some, okay.
The city adopted a small cell ordinance back in, I think, twenty eight, beginning of 2018.
That's right.
Some, the way that the industry proposed that was that small cells are, with 5G is how the industry is leading. So, you still have the macro towers, but then small cells are able to kind of go in the right way on private property that aren't as intrusive as a 200-foot guided tower. Now, we've received 90 applications for small cells. All of those have been from one carrier. I can't speak, and I don't know what Verizon or the other carriers are looking to do. I know I, in the NPC meeting, I brought up the idea of stealth and small cells, but that wasn't addressed at the NPC level, and I don't want to get into that right here. But to go off of what you're saying, more towers, I think the industry is leaning more towards the stealth and small cell route, and AT&amp;T is obviously accomplishing that and moving forward with it. I have no idea where the other industries lie in that, and so how they would approach that, maybe, I can't speak for them, is through, you know, monopoles and guided towers until they can get their infrastructure in place to do small cells.
And what was the position of the NPC in regards to sharing a tower or adding another layer so that it could be multiple uses from different service entities?
If I remember correctly, the staff recommendation was that that was a possibility, and I guess it's still a possibility. We are just pro co-location and not so much doing additional construction of additional towers, if that possibility is there. Again, I share it with you, the expertise level we don't possess, but some people have said that in order to improve capability of towers, that there are things that the industry can do to clear up some of the clutter that's being caused by some of the network difficulties with the tower, and that possibly, these are things that haven't even been looked into. And that's just possibility of not trying to speak with authority of anything of that nature. But we get things, just like Councilman Butcher here get comments, we get comments from other persons also of ways that this industry can better police and program itself and improve the services that the citizenry of Shreveport are being able to obtain.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Councilman Nicholson.
First, Mr. Chairman, I'll just direct members of the council to a portion of the expert report that we received that addresses Councilman Bradford's last question. Neither the NPC nor CMS, the consultant, had documentation confirming a lack of structural capacity in the existing tower. CMS also noted that it had not received a structural analysis of the tower with the proposed loading via Verizon. So, that's the problem with allowing this to go forward, in my opinion, is that we've got both staff and an independent consultant who reviewed everything, and they both have told us that there is not evidence in the records sufficient to prove the necessity of the new tower. And I don't doubt what Councilman Butcher is saying about self-service being suboptimal in this area, but without evidence presented to the NPC, we don't know whether a new power tower is a better solution to that than just add to the old tower. So, the cautious thing to do in this case, the conservative, not the politically conservative thing to do, but the conservative thing to do is to reverse the NPC, send it back, let them, with the help of experts, reevaluate it again, and if they reach the same decision and make a good record, it'll come back to us and the tower will be built. So, that's what I urge the council to do. Unless there are further comments, I'm going to read the...
There's one. Yes, sir. Councilman Green?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, I talked to an expert, of course, my granddaddy said an expert is a person who has an opinion who lives 50 miles out of town. But I talked to an expert, and he said that that tower moving to, the one, the new one that would be built, would not give better service in that area. He said moving it from that distance would not improve the service. You would have more monopolizing, because once this would go through, then you'll have everybody else using this to build another tower next to another tower. So, that's, so Mr., I think, Councilman Flurry?
No, I just want, how you doing on time?
I'm good, I'm good. If you make the motion, I'll second it.
But because there's a particular requirement of federal law, but our reasons being writing, I'm going to read the motion that has been distributed to you and then make it.
Yes, sir.
This is my motion, which all members of the council have before them. Having considered the entire record of this appeal, the parties' written submissions and the arguments of counsel, be resolved that the decision of the NPC in case 19301 WFC is reversed, and the application of Pim Hill LLC for a special use permit to construct a telecommunications facility behind the Goodwill Industries' location on Jump Road Drive is denied because the applicant has failed to satisfy its burden of establishing the necessity of the telecommunications facility for the reasons stated in the Center for Municipal Solutions Report dated October 16, 2019, which is attached to the motion. That is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All right. It's been moved by Vice Chair Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Green.
Question?
Councilman Bradford.
I want Councilman Butcher to give me an explanation again. What was the feedback that you was getting?
There is feedback, and I've experienced myself, that for the Verizon network, there is some issues with coverage in that area. There's been some constituents that live in those apartments that have contacted me and some other, some other people in there. So, you know, I, Councilman Green, I, you're expert, just as good for me as anybody else, as I, you know, I don't know, I'm not an expert in this field. I just feel like that, you know, I'm going to vote to uphold the NPC's ruling on this and move forward like that. I think that the tower will better serve my constituents.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thompson, to uphold this motion that Councilman Nicholson read, do we vote yes or no?
You vote yes if you want to approve that motion.
Yes, thank you. Which will reverse the NPC's decision.
Yes. And you understand, Mr. Councilman, is what, is what would happen after that?
Well, my presumption is that the applicant, and I'll just interject that, as I said at the last meeting, if our rules allowed us to reman this to the NPC, just say to it, send it back and make a better record, I would do that. And I've asked staff to work on changing our rules so that we have that option. We don't have that option today. My presumption is that after we, if this motion is adopted, the applicant will return to the NPC with a new application, and if it can satisfy the burdens set forth in the ordinance, it'll get its tower, its telecommunications facility. I certainly hear and respect what Councilman Butcher is saying, but nobody up here, based on personal experience with a cellphone, can assess whether or not this tower is going to improve service. That is a decision that only experts can make, and our consultant has, I think, made amply clear in the report that it provided, that that has not been established thus far by this applicant.
Well, that certainly brings a new equation to it. I mean, I was, I was thinking and was told, you know, not by an expert, but that additional, a tower of that magnitude will indeed bring better coverage for that area. But I think, and I don't, I want to be prudent and not, and not to do anything that would create a standard that we would have to live with. But at the same time, it appears that the urgency is there to move, isn't it? So, but again, you know...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I look at it like this, if Verizon is up here speaking and they are the client, that'd be just like me telling Councilman Nicholson that he doesn't need new tires on his car when they're bald.
Right.
I mean, that's just kind of what my opinion is. If Verizon's saying that they want a new tower, you know, if you need new tires and I say, no, you can't have them right now, that's kind of what the perception, I'm taking their opinion. I don't think they're going to want to spend the money to put a new tower up if they don't need it.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman, well, I had Councilman Flurry up first, and then...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in this conversation. Now, Councilman Butcher, you said that some of your constituents had talked about the coverage of Verizon. And I can't bring Councilman Bradford in on this, because he just got a new phone, but he is with AT&amp;T. But I'm asking you, did you happen to have with you now, or have you looked at the Verizon brochure which shows their coverage? It's just a question.
No, I hadn't looked at it. I do have Verizon.
Because we all have it with the city.
Yeah.
We've put all of our money for years now on Verizon, so I'm just wondering, maybe the coverage, we'd have a chart or something that show that. Just a point, thank you.
Call for the vote, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I just want to say that I kind of agree with Councilman Butcher on this one, and I'm going to vote with Councilman Butcher.
Will that be a no vote?
That'd definitely be a no vote. So, if there's not any discussion, we're going to call for the vote.
Motion, Karen, six, one second.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, it's been customary that we would address the council, I mean, the clerk's report, if the candidate is here, the candidate is here, so we can interview him, and he can excuse himself as well. So, suspend the rules and hear the clerk's report.
I'll say.
Moved by Councilman Bradford, seconded by Councilman Green. Please vote, suspend the rule. Motion, Karen, six, one second. Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Cluris. The council received a letter from the mayor appointing Lawrence Anderson to the Shreveport Bojor Sports Commission. I have, under the rules, this cannot be voted on today, but you can speak to him about the opponent.
No, no, we just want to speak with you just for a second, yeah, yeah. So, for instance, we want to know, you know, I know you. And Larry, I don't know if you remember, I don't know what Super Bowl, eighty-something, and Dallas was almost to make a comeback, and he returned a punch back for a church down and squashed that, that comeback. What year was that, what year was that, Larry?
Must have been seventy-eight, something. It's been a long time ago.
Yeah. So, you Dallas fans, don't be mad at it. So, I appreciate, you know, I mean, your history is, and sports is documented, well documented. Are you familiar with the Sports Commission to the extent?
To an extent, I am.
Okay. And I know you make a great addition. Is there any, and we're trying to, I mean, the question has been, are we a sports city? Do we, can we move into a new dimension of bringing in quality sporting events and promoting what we have and making this city more sports?
It is my hope and my belief that we can.
We can do that.
Yes, sir.
And your, your network around the sporting community, I think, would also enhance that as well.
It's my hope that it would. I know a few people in sports, yes.
Well, listen, I appreciate you willing to serve in this capacity, and you have my, just your support.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say, congratulations, I'll be supporting you, but I want to know if you could use your influence, some kind of way to help us to get another quarterback.
I will be traveling.
We're looking kind of bad right now, Larry.
I will be traveling this way.
Need some help. Call somebody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Council.
We have the following request to speak. Sheila Wimberly. Ms. Wimberly?
I'm Sheila Crosby Wimberly, 6170 Wincanton Drive, Shreveport. I would actually like to wait two weeks from now, since you guys have stated that you will postpone and come back in two weeks regarding ordinance 165.
Oh, yeah, of course, thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
Mr. Craig Lee.
Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. In a few hours, we'll be attending Councilman James Green's church for the Poor People's Campaign, and there'll be a lot of posturing tonight, a lot of people pretending like they do things in Shreveport to eliminate poverty and race, which they don't do. But I thought it was interesting today, online, there was an article dated September the 23rd, and the article says, "All college students should take a mandatory course on Black History and White Privilege." This article was written by Ms. Emily Walton, who is an associate professor of sociology at Dartmouth College. And there's some profound things that she says in this article, and I wanted to quote a few of them, because the number one issue that the city of Shreveport has contended with and still contains, will and will continue to contend with, is racism and white supremacy. But she says that white students in my class of race and ethnicity often learn the most, but few take it. All colleges should require a course like this to graduate. The question I have for you guys, how many of you have taken a class on race and ethnicity? Councilman Butcher? Councilman Nicholson? You see, so this is the basis of what this meeting is going to be tonight. Councilman Flurry, you have? Okay. So, so when we're, when we're dealing with this whole issue, all of this permeates throughout your entire lives, from elementary to high school to college, and now what happens, you get into key positions in legislative office, and you have no understanding of this process. And so, like I say, Reverend Barber will be here tonight, and we'll be talking about poverty and the structural dynamics of race and white supremacy that exist in the city of Shreveport will continue to exist, because the individuals who are in legislative capacities have no understanding of this particular process. And she lays out some very good things, and she also says, "All students should take an accessible course on race and ethnicity if racial equity is to be an achievable goal." And she came up with this term called white blindness. And within the article, and I'm going to give this to you guys, she talks about the fact that because white folks have never been taught about race and equity and the injustices that exist, they go through life believing that everything is just, I'm going to roll up my sleeves and work hard, and this is how I achieve, which is a lie. But at the end of the day, she challenges that. And so, for those of you who will be attending tonight, the Poor People's Campaign with Reverend Barber, I do suggest, and I will get this article for you, so that you all can really start to understand what plagues the city of Shreveport and all cities throughout the United States.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Lee, also, tonight, it won't be any posturing, we're just going to have service, but Pastor Barber will be back next year to do a whole series on what you just talked about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tracy Toops. Mr. Toops, while you come up, I will tell you that I anticipate that my legislation on the agenda for introduction will be referred to the Public Safety Committee. That motion will be made and will pass, and so you're welcome to speak today, but if you'd like to speak to the committee, you can do that as well.
Good afternoon again, City Councilmembers. Tracy Toops, Thrifty Discount Liquor and Wine Company. In regards to what Councilman Nicholson just said, I wanted to more or less come back today to sort of answer some questions that were given to me and sort of give you some of the finer points associated with our concern in regards to changing these times. Like I said yesterday, it would, you know, essentially drive people, instead of purchasing from us or another liquor store and going home, it would essentially drive them more than likely to a bar or restaurant to have a drink, and at that point, potentially drive home. And if not that, then to go over to Bojor to have their needs met, which obviously would equate to lost sales tax dollars in the city of Shreveport. On a couple of levels, I question the, as to whether or not this change is constitutional in the first place. When we made the investment in these stores, we were given the right of certain times. And at that point, or at this potential point, we're talking about changing those times, which would be a detriment to us. On another level, I question it due to the fact that if this law were to change for us, then it should change for anybody that sells anything alcohol-related. In regards to the sales question, Councilman Bradford, I believe you were the one that asked me yesterday about sales, and I've tried to get this as quick as possible, and these are fairly rough figures, but we look, we are looking at potentially a 12% to 15% loss in annual sales, and that does not include overall, or, I'm sorry, other customer service-related transactions. 12% to 15% decrease in sales is not an insignificant figure to us, and that figure would only increase as we would continuously lose customers. If a customer that, say, works at the glass factory, gets off at nine o'clock, comes to our store, and decides he wants to come in, I don't care if it's a Coke or a bottle of water, a 12-pack of beer, a bottle of whiskey, whatever it may be, and he determines that we're closed, and he says, "Well, instead of going to this store, I'm going to go to the grocery store and buy my 20-ounce Coke or my bottle of water or my 12-pack of beer," well, he then becomes a customer of that grocery store, even during times of which we are open. So, we feel strongly that those decreases in sales would only get greater. Couple other quick points. Mr. Flurry, just to answer.
Well, let me interject, that it's my job to keep time, and I'm committed.
Sure.
Yes, sir, please.
Mr. Toops, you were about to say?
Oh, just to answer your question.
I heard your name is Flurry, go ahead.
Yes, sir, Councilman Flurry. Just in regards to what, you had asked a question about the store at 3434 Yuri Drive yesterday. According to our records, we have not had an armed robbery there in better than 10 years, but I've also been looking at customer, I mean, I'm sorry, employee figures and sales figures, and trying to pull everything together to get back today. Couple other points, I'm sorry, does anybody else have any question?
Well, I haven't finished asking.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Would you be surprised that the Shreveport Police Department's records show that 28% of business robberies occur from nine to 12 at night? Would that, would that surprise you?
Wouldn't surprise me.
Okay. We'll, I'll ask Chief to go back for me. Chief, I know you're back there, but I'd like to know, that Yuri Drive robbery that about two years ago, that we chased the guy, and those people, you know, we talked about those four from Texas?
Yes, sir.
That, that's been since 10 years, but we'll check our numbers, but my point is that 28% of the armed robberies for business occur from nine at night. Well, so, we'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Roland Toops. Mr. Chairman.
All right, Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, as indicated yesterday when we discussed this legislation, my concern is that we have consistent rules for the entire city. One of the really insightful remarks that some of the representatives from the Gladstone neighborhood made when we considered the liquor store at Gladstone and Kings was that they recognized that they had the resources really to mount a very aggressive defense of having a liquor store in their neighborhood, right next to their homes. There are people in this community who are just as adversely impacted by liquor stores... There are people in this community who are just as adversely impacted by liquor stores as the Gladstone neighborhood is or will be, but they don't have the same resources. They don't have the money to hire expensive lawyers to mount multi-year court battles. I want to make sure that we treat everybody fairly. I want to make sure that we show just as much concern about placing liquor stores in poor neighborhoods, African-American neighborhoods, as we do in other neighborhoods. Okay? If it's not good for a well-off district in Gladstone, then in my opinion, it's not good for Cedar Grove. And I told one of my colleagues today, talking about this legislation, that I remember 25 years ago, riding down the road with my parents between where we live south of town and South Highlands through Cedar Grove on Line Avenue before 49 opened, and I would roll by, we'd drive by liquor stores, and I thought, "Why do those people have liquor stores right next to their houses?" And then a few years later, somebody tried to put a restaurant, a nice restaurant that was going to sell liquor right outside my parents' neighborhood, where my three siblings grew up. And the neighborhood went to war to keep a business from selling alcohol near their homes, and they won. So, I don't want us to have a system where if you got money and you have the wherewithal to fight having a liquor store in your neighborhood, then one doesn't get put there, or it gets restricted hours. And then if you don't have money, you get a different outcome. So, look, that's why I proposed this. I think nine o'clock is a very reasonable time to close liquor stores. The suggestion that it would be unconstitutional is flat wrong. We have the authority to regulate alcohol. I recognize that we're going to have to have a conversation about what this should look like and what the law should be going forward, but letting liquor stores stay open until 4:00 a.m., which is our current law, is ridiculous, and we need to change that. I've talked to several colleagues today who have indicated that they would like to see this go to committee, to the Public Safety Committee, including the chair of that committee, Councilman Butcher. I'm agreeable to that, and so that motion will be made at the appropriate time. But just, Mr. Chairman, I want you, our colleagues, and the public to know that the reason I have advanced this legislation is that I want to treat everybody in this city the same, fairly, because that has not been the case for too long on many issues. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Weiner.
Hello. I'm Bill Weiner. I live at number 2 Longleaf Lane, Shreveport, 71106. I am here to talk about deferred maintenance. I've got it all written out, and if each of you could follow, that would be good, if I can distribute these.
Yes, it is.
Can I ask you to start over so we can read this together?
We'll read it with you, Mr. Weiner.
You'll read it with you, go ahead.
This is about deferred maintenance. The city and other local elected bodies do not maintain the public properties as stewards for the public that actually own them. They do not do the routine maintenance and let them deteriorate to a point of demolition by neglect. About 10 or 15 years ago, a group of community activists would meet for coffee once a week to discuss the incompetence at City Hall. The one big issue was our sewer issues. We endeavored to inform the city that if they did not take care of it, the EPA would fine the city and make it happen. As usual, the can was kicked to the next administration, and on and on. A similar situation with other public properties has happened in a few of federal courts to protect our cultural and historic areas, twice, and district courts, three times. And I realize that this is pointless, as the city and other government entities do not learn from their mistakes. If one was to look at the future, they would realize that in four generations, that Shreveport would be bankrupt and cease to exist. It's too bad. There are things that can be done now to address this. I know what to do, however, no elected official cares to listen. Too bad. I have retired from being a local activist, but the city's current action to not protect one of its national registered properties, Fire Station Number Eight, has awakened me. You should be ashamed for yourself. Do you know that our fire stations were an attraction that visitors desire to see? They are significant architecture that recognize, that recognize their sense of place. They are part of our history.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner.
Any questions?
Yes. Is this your cell phone at the bottom?
It's my new one, yes.
Okay. You say I should be ashamed of myself, but what is your solution? You told us the problem, but what is your solution to this?
I could do that, but I can't do it quickly.
Well, I'll call you, okay? Is that okay, if I call you?
That would be wonderful, yeah.
And your number, 655-6335?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll give you a call.
There is a solution, and...
Well, I'd be interested in hearing. We hear about a lot of problems, but nobody seems to have solutions.
Well, I do.
I know you're a solution-driven man, so...
Okay, well, thank you.
And you've been here in Shreveport a long time, so you're part of problems too, don't you think?
Yeah. Any other questions?
I'll give you a call, though.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Ken Craft.
Ken Craft, 157 Archer, Shreveport, 71105. Can you hear me now? Oh, that's for eyes.
All day long.
Okay. Listen, I'm here to talk about the $186 million bond proposition. Anybody listening who intends to vote against it might consider, and the only other three persons with whom I spoke who checked, State Farm in one case, Allstate in one case, GEICO in another case, all agree with me that the taxes I'm paying now, if all three fail, will go down less for them. If we get a Class II city fire rating, their homeowners insurance with those companies, mine's USA, will go up more. So, it doesn't save you any money, we might as well get new fire stations at 11:14 and 15:00. Just read the editorial by our new police chief, Ben Raymond, on page 15 of The Inquisitor, dated October 18th, or online, especially the fourth and fifth paragraphs. Man, that should sell you. The 30-something million, Proposition 1, is enough water pressure for the hydrants to put out the fires. I want a new station, I want a new truck, I don't want a 79-year-old station and a 32-year-old truck, which is what I have. What's illustrative, one might look at my 186th election, I'm sorry, April 28th of 18, six city millages. Always do the number of elections first, because that's what sticks. It's ironic that the amount is 186 million. Well, that day, the voters passed all six millages. Police and fire got 69%. Yes, terrible turnout, 8.1%. But streets and drainage got 68%. The others got 66, 5, 64, and 64. I hope that was the last city election on millage renewals. Those millages totaled twice, the current six mills, more than twice, and we renewed those on average two to one. So, I'm hopeful, and I think these are going to pass. But I hear silliness on the radio, I hear Louis Avaloni on Kiel saying, "The city's bankrupt. The unfunded accrued liability in the pension and the retirees' healthcare has nothing to do with general obligation bonds for streets and drainage, police, fire, and parks." They're separate. You don't need to be an accountant or CPA to know that. They're linking things that shouldn't be linked. Yeah, we have unfunded accrued liabilities. I know city employees who just wish they could get a cost of living every so often. I'm blessed, as a retired state employee, that we get a COLA every now and then. Social Security, 1.6% in January. But city employees, another problem. And as we move forward and we look at the sales tax so far, we're about 2/10% after nine months over last year. Not that great, but we're several percent above the budgeted figure. Let's increase the operating budget reserve, very dear to me, as the guy who suggested it on April 18th of 1980 during a job interview. Let's put every available dollar we can, and let's take a million dollars and give a one-time check to our public safety officers. Not a cost of living, but give them $1,000 each.
Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Department M110, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I'm looking very forward to going to the state fair in the next two or three days, whichever day is possible, if it doesn't rain. The food and exhibits are my two favorite things I really enjoy the most since I've been going out there for the past few years. Last year, I saw something that I thought I'd never, ever seen, pig racing. However, I did for the first time. I was not hallucinating, I couldn't even spell the word, but I was not pretending like I saw things, because I did. It was just ridiculous, unusual, and funny. Never saw such a stupid thing in my life. But anyway, just like a green light, you could go saying things that you might not be able to even take back. In this case, if you do, just like a red light, stop and think about how what you say may affect or impact other people, too. Because two weeks ago, we really had some things going on about the liquor store, and things were really just said uncalled for. A good friend did give me this advice, not just for me, but for it to be passed on to other people. Sometimes we say unfortunate things in the heat of the moment, and we don't really mean to. It happens. It's a misunderstanding, and don't take it personal, but I'm not an alcoholic, so you won't catch me drinking. Or even just like, if it's possible, some person might say to another person, "I wore braces," and she'll say, "I'm not going to the prom with you." Get lost. Or another one might say, just like the guys you go out with, "Milk, kiss my brie's."
Mr. Marvin Mohammed.
I first want to speak on Councilman Nicholson's ordinance. I want to say that I am glad to hear that it will be going to the Safety Committee, because at the end of the day, that it really still doesn't, really does what needs to happen. The urban community, the black community, is polluted with zillions of liquor stores. The non-conforming use and grandfather clauses have been violated for decades. These so-called liquor stores, which are no more than prostitution dens and drug havens, because they are the way that drugs are being introduced into our community. We're going to be sending an email out to our new referring chief addressing this matter, listing those liquor stores that are selling drug paraphernalia straight from the back counter. We mentioned this to Councilman Nicholson, I mean, Councilman Butcher, three months ago, when he introduced legislation dealing with alcohol, but at that time, we were ignored. So, I'm hoping that this time, that we move forward the way we want to do. But let me move forward, because I have two more issues that I want to deal with. One, this council and its inability to be disrespectful to the citizens of the city of Shreveport has to stop. It's ridiculous, the rigidness of this council. So, we've been asking, pleading, and begging for you all to come up with solutions. The councilman from District E just asked the citizen, "Well, what is the solution?" The solution is, there's always weedy, but never interceding. So, we're going to ask the administration to, we're going to ask the C.A.O. and her assistant to meet with the department heads and scrub and erase state budgets, and begin to see, can we move monies over to community development, so we can start using those monies to address concerns in the urban core. I hate to say this, but, well, I don't hate to say this, but we're going to have a recall, because you all don't listen to us. Unfortunately, your colleague from District A, he will be recalled. We have the information here that we're going to be mailing to the state of Louisiana. We just left the registered voters' office, and we found out there's 15,514 registered voters in that district. We only have to get 33.3% of those to actually have a petition, so that now, the registrar can then place a special election, hopefully in the spring. That is our effort. Mayor Perkins, we're going to ask you to create a urban development forum, a development forum where block grant money and section...
Mr. Mohammed, I do my best to be consistent, and your time has expired, sir.
I'm sorry?
Your time has expired. Your three minutes are up.
Okay, well, I'm...
Mr. Mohammed, I'll take your information after this meeting as well, and you can pass it to me as well.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to motion for 90 more seconds, Councilman Nicholson. Just a motion and a second, and a vote. The councilman from District E asks for a solution. I have a solution that I want to put forth to the council, how we can move the city forward. Just 90 seconds, that's all we're asking for.
What is your solution, Mr. Mohammed?
Our solution is, again, is for community grant dollars, particularly Section 108 loans, is to be pushed into the urban core, so we can start developing those communities. In 1933, when President Franklin D. Roosevelt had to fight and deal with an economy that had dropped to nothing, he established the National Industrial Recovery Act. In that, he established different programs in order to lift the country out of the Great Depression. We have to deny that Shreveport is indeed is in trouble. We can pull Shreveport out of trouble, but we won't be able to do it without assisting, aiding, and helping the 60% of those who are underclass, underprivileged, and underserved, the black community. So, we're looking for anywhere from between $5 to $10 million to be transferred from other portions of the budget into community development. This isn't nothing new. Downtown Shreveport has been re-innovated by Section 108 loans and community block dollars. Rhino's, the Robson Center, Fairmont, different other places, up and down Texas Street, has rebirthed because of these dollars. So, if we did it in District B, if we did it in downtown Shreveport, we should also be willing to start beginning to eliminate blight into the urban core.
Let me make this request of you as well. Mr. Mohammed, you indicated that you have information about liquor stores where drugs are being dealt, and there's prostitution. My experience is that the police department is very responsive to information of that nature, and so if you or anyone else is aware that drugs or drug paraphernalia are being sold out of liquor stores or anywhere else, please provide that information to the police. And I passed information two weeks ago to the chief of police about a location that was selling liquor to underage individuals, and the police took prompt action, so thank you.
Let me be very specific to that, Councilman Nicholson. I spoke with the chief the day before his confirmation, and I told him, although our precedent wasn't for his confirmation, but at the end of the day, he is confirming, so we will be working with him. We will be sending out a communication to him, listing those liquor stores, the one on Pure Avenue, the one on MLK, the one on Jurella. I can give you the addresses.
Thank you.
You asked for solutions. You have a citizen, you have a citizen that's reporting illegal operations. I know we all want to go home, and I want to go home. In fact, I got a job site I need to get back to. But it is just that critical, so don't cut me off. See, because what we can't do, we can't ask the citizens to be brave, bold, and courageous... See, because what we can't do, we can't ask the citizens to be brave, bold, and courageous enough to report criminal activity, and then when one is willing to do so in the face of the city, here, those are under the sound of my voice, and that is being broadcast throughout the city. I'm not afraid.
We're gonna have the chief to speak to you in this...
Hey, Mr. Chair, that's fine. Thank you.
Ms. Lauren Ray Anderson.
Lauren Ray Anderson, two forty-seven East Lister, seven-eleven, zero one. By now, I've almost forgotten what I was gonna talk about. Anyway, um, hey, I'm here to talk about the liquor store legislation regarding the hours of operation. I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to decrease the amount of hours that people are able to work when you have a demographic and a majority of the population who complain about lack of work, lack of employment, lack of opportunity. The legislation, it restricts commerce, it restricts people's ability to work, and these are constitutional violations. It also restricts the Twenty-First Amendment, which is another constitutional violation, and it basically takes us back sixty years. And, Mr. Nicholson, as you like to remind everyone, you are a lawyer, and you took an oath to uphold the Constitution, and that goes above and beyond your duty as a... in your government position. It also restricts my options as an American. I'm a night owl. I stay up late, and sometimes I like to go to Thrifty Liquor on Yuri, which is close to me. I go to it late, and I am completely lawful and peaceful, and everyone else there is the same. Also, restricting the time that they're able to operate, it, in my opinion, eliminates what's good about Shreveport. I came... Well, I'm from here, but I spent eight years in Texas, and their liquor stores, they close at nine, and it just... It's a hindrance in my lifestyle, basically. I like the convenience. There's... Honestly, I don't understand what the problem is. It sounds like you are trying to legislate morality. I haven't seen you draw any correlations between having a liquor store open past nine and having any criminal or threatening activity. I wanted to talk about other things also, specifically, on a lighter note, the Shreve Memorial Library, their Book of the Month is Becoming by Michelle Obama, and it's a very good book. I recommend it to anybody, specifically politicians. There's so much insight and information in it, so much history, information about voting, education in general, the medical field. It's just a really great book, and I love how the Shreve Memorial Library is trying to put the entire parish on the same page so that we can all have a discourse and a dialogue on one set of facts instead of being such a divided city. I know that switch gears really fast. I know there's a lot of commotion, but thank you if you were able to keep up.
Mr. Chairman, those are all the requests to speak.
And we have no other executive amendment to be considered. There are no items on the consent agenda for introduction. Mr. Thompson, can we continue with consented items to be adopted?
Uh, there is one. It's Resolution 127, so a motion to adopt would be in order.
So move.
Right, Councilman Bradford, and second by Councilman Butcher. Motion carries with five.
Under the regular legislation, Resolution 126 approves the 2020 Downtown Development Authority Program of Work.
So move.
Second. Move by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Butcher, 126. Please vote. Motion carries with five, Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 128 amends Resolution Number Seventy-two of 2018 to approve Calumet Shreveport Refining LLC for participation in the industrial tax exemption program.
So move.
Mr. Thompson, has the issue that we discussed been addressed with this?
I'm sorry?
Is the issue with 128, has that been addressed?
It has been addressed.
Thank you.
It was motion by Councilman Bradford, and second by Councilman Flurry, vice versa, I'm sorry. Councilman Flurry, and second, I mean, second by Councilman Butcher. The motion carries with five, Mr. Thompson.
Resolution 129 has been adopted. We're now under introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to November the twelfth. The first is Resolution 130. It authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreed with Shreveport-Bosia Convention and Tourist Bureau. Resolution 131 authorizes the use of certain equipment by sports spectrum race management. Resolution 132 states the City of Shreveport's endorsement of Twin Oaks Investments LLC to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program. And Resolution 133 authorizes mayor to accept a donation of real estate with improvements located at twenty-nine sixteen Fulton Street in as-is condition with an estimated value of twenty thousand dollars from Wells Fargo National Bank to be utilized by the community development for home ownership or rental to a low-to-moderate-income homeowner or tenant.
Motion to introduce.
So move. Second.
We're now into introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to November the twelfth. Ordinance 160 amends the City of Shreveport's 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance 161 amends Chapter Ten, Article Four, Division Two, Section Ten dash one seventy-five of the Code of Ordinances regarding hours of operation for retail dealers of alcohol in non-downtown zoning districts and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Ordinance 162 amends Chapter Ten, Article Two, Division Four, Section Ten dash eighty-two of the Code regarding sales of alcohol near homes, churches, schools, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Ordinance 163 authorizes an encroachment into the city's public right-of-way located near thirty-one fifty Artist Taylor Drive as more fully described herein and to authorize a mayor or his designee to execute an encroachment permit with Southern Hills Neighborhood Association. Ordinance 164 authorizes a mayor to execute three cooperative endeavor lease agreements of city-owned property located in Leadbetter Heights, Shreveport, in Caddo Parish to one or more entities managed or controlled by the Housing Authority of the City of Shreveport or its subsidiary for the development of the Bayou Grand Housing Initiative for purposes which benefit the public and otherwise provide him with respect thereto. And Ordinance 165, which is a zoning matter case number nineteen dash three eighty-seven C., if adopted, it would rezone property located approximately one thousand and six hundred feet west of Pines Road and three hundred feet south of Jefferson Page Road from RE Residential Estate District to R-2 Multifamily Residential District.
Motion to introduce the ordinance.
So move.
Mr. Chairman.
Was there a second? We're now into ordinances on second...
Mr. Chairman, this is the council, is my ordinance concerning hours of operation for retail dealers of alcohol merits further study, and for that reason, I move that it be referred to the Public Safety Committee. That's Ordinance 161.
Yes, it was introduced, now it's gonna be referred. Does anybody disagree?
I'll second that motion.
Motion carries with five.
We're now into ordinances on second reading and final passage. The first is Ordinance 123. It authorizes mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor lease agreement of city-owned property located at fifteen oh-six Abbey Street in Caddo Parish to the Serenity Club of Shreveport, Inc., for the purpose of the less need to use it for programs and to maintain the building and grounds. Said property is not needed for public purposes and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
So move. Second.
So move by Councilman Bradford, second by Vice Chair. No discussion, please vote. Motion carries with five, Mr. Thompson.
The next is Ordinance 135. It amends the City of Shreveport's general fund budget. Move for adoption.
Second.
Move by Councilman Bradford, second by Vice Chair. There's no discussion, please vote. Number 135. Motion carries with five, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 136 amends a 2019 budget for the MPC Special Revenue Fund. I don't believe these are any new funds. I think it moves funds around.
Should I show move there with a second?
Move by Councilman Bradford, and second by Councilman Butcher. Motion carries with five, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 137 amends a 2019 general fund budget for fire.
So move. Second.
Move by the chair, and second by Councilman Bradford. There's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with five, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 138 amends Chapter Thirty-eight, Housing and Property Standards for the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances.
So move. Second.
Move by the chair, and second by the vice chair. There's no discussion, please vote. Bradford. Motion carries with five, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 139 establishes a new Chapter Thirty-eight point five, Procedures for Abatement of the City of Shreveport Louisiana Code of Ordinances.
So move. Second.
Move by the chair, second by the vice chair. There's no discussion.
I'd like to speak on...
Mr. Flurry? Councilman Flurry?
I just wanna say thank you to Councilman... Mr. Chairman, you and Councilman Nicholson for having the vision to set this court up and to move forward on it. It's long been needed in the City of Shreveport, and your legislation there will be remembered in years past.
Thank you, Councilman Flurry.
I believe he was... He shared our vision, didn't he?
But I'm accepted, because he hasn't thanked me for nothing in five years, so I thank you.
Five years, that's gonna be talked about around this town a great bit.
And the motion carries with five, Mr. Thompson.
We're now at a table legislation. I don't believe that there's any ordinance or resolution to be removed from the table.
Okay. Are we down to...
We're down to appeals. We had one appeal, and it's already been decided.
Okay. So no other appeals today, no ABO appeal. Are there... Any reports from officers' boards are committed?
We're gonna have a Public Safety Committee meeting, I would think, probably in three weeks prior to one of our meetings.
Okay. I think the same with property standards, but I'd probably try to do it either coincide or the week before, so we can discuss this court also. Mr. Thompson, is that a clerk's report?
It's already been given, Mr. Chair.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mayor Perkins, do you have any additional communications?
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
No comments from Mayor Perkins. Does any of the council member have any additional communication?
Councilman Bradford? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate Councilman Nicholson referring the closing to committee. I would... I mean, we got three weeks before our next meeting, so I would like to put together a series, a... not a series, but several issues that need to be considered. You know, some of them have been mentioned. I mentioned a couple. Will this ordinance reflect any outlet themselves alcohol? Convenience stores, those daiquiri shops, whatever, those kind of things. And then I would like to somewhat estimate what type of revenue that we would be losing if we limited the closing time to the nine o'clock hour. And I think we can get, you know, some estimate of what that may be, because I think these are some issues that need to be considered as we move forward. Councilman.
Councilman Flurry.
I just wanted to comment and say thank you to the department heads that have helped me this week on some serious... Public Works, Gary, thank you for what you responded to those citizens out there. We've had a tornado come through. Not much said about it, but it hit parts of our city, and I saw our Public Works people out today trying to gather up those limbs and things, and to our sanitation people that have put in the street department, drainage, all of them that have worked this week to try to keep the city back as close as we could to normal. So thank you all for what you do. I know it's not very much thanks goes and praise goes out, but I wanna say that how much I appreciate what you all have done this week.
Mr. Chairman, two brief remarks. First, in response to Councilman Bradford's question, I do want it to be clear to the public that the legislation which I propose concerning the hours of retail alcohol sales, which has been referred to committee, would restrict the hours of sale only for businesses where the primary commodity sold is alcohol. And so that would cover packaged liquor stores for off-premises consumption. So that would cover packaged liquor stores. It would cover daiquiri shops that sell primarily daiquiris. It wouldn't cover convenience stores where wine and beer are sold. It wouldn't cover grocery stores or Walmart where wine and beer are sold, or anywhere else where the primary commodity sold is not alcohol for off-premises consumption.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to briefly thank the administration for the action that it has taken in response to the external audit report for 2018. This has been the subject of much media discussion in recent weeks. As we all know, the audit report revealed really very serious deficiencies for the period ending December thirty-first, 2018, before this administration took office. But the administration has taken some concrete steps to move us in the right direction. Our finance director, after long service to the city, will be retiring. We have... We will have a new controller soon. These and other personnel changes, I believe, will help us address the serious problems that the audit report identified, and will help us assure the public that the finance department is responsible in managing the city's money. So Mayor Perkins, Ms. Jones, thank you for your work in that regard.
Councilman Butcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to address Councilman Bradford's... I believe that we... I'm one-hundred percent with you. I believe we need a holistic look at the way our liquor laws are in the city. I'm not sure if that needs to be taken step by step like Councilman Nicholson is proposing, or if we need to look at a broader... A broader idea of where we are and what we're doing, where it's fair and equal to everybody in the city. So I think that the Public Safety Committee is the place to start. So if any council members or any members of the public have any comments, if they'd like to email or get to council staff or email directly to me, I'll be more than happy to bring it up in the Public Safety Committee meeting. We'll probably go ahead and set a date towards the end of the week, so it'll give everybody plenty of notice of when that committee meeting will be.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Councilman Flurry, will you back up?
Yeah, I'll back up. I just want to tell you all, don't be drinking and driving.
All right, we have no executive session today, and if there's not anything else, then this meeting is adjourned.